Welcome to our January Board of Education meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, in which it is well, with liberty and justice for all.
Paulina Frye.
Here.
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 That way then?
Here.
In the event of an emergency, visitors are advised that they may exit the room from the one side toward a door directly into the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to leave in your automobiles. If you think or if you have a traffic light, please come to your seat.
Thank you. The first thing on our agenda is our first hearing of visitors. At this time, we request that questions and comments be kept to agenda items only. Does anyone care to address the board at this time? Okay, at this time, the hearing of visitors is for agenda items only. At the end of the meeting, there's another time for questions or comments of anything in general. The reason we do that is in case there's something on the agenda that somebody wants to speak about before we take action on it. Then there's one following at the end of the meeting. Okay? Was I clear? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. So not just go around. Okay. That brings us to our consent agenda, which is the approval of our minutes of the special meeting or budget form of January 5th. Our financial matters, which are our bills, our treasures report, our monthly budget status report, our transfers, extra classroom activity fund. We're surplusing a couple of things. Contracted services for the musical. And that's it. Why do I feel like I'm out of order here, Patty? No, that's it, right? Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? No. Okay, motion. Can I just ask one question? I'm sorry. I should have sent this to you before, Mr. Scheid, and I don't need an answer this evening. There's a transfer to fund Chicago production supplies. That wasn't budgeted?
No, I actually have that answer.
Oh, good.
Yeah. So we didn't have, we had our play last year and we spent monies that we had in the club fund in the ECAF account. We typically would have sold thousands of tickets and brought all that money back in.
Right.
We did not. We didn't budget for it because we don't normally budget for it. So our choice was do a production with no funding.
So we didn't have any income to offer?
Or fund it. So we're funding it for this year with the expectation that money will then go into the ECAF fund next year to continue to pay for the plays and productions as they've always done. The other choice was to not have a production or to have a production with no ability to buy sets and all those different things.
That makes sense.
So we're transferring funds from areas that we have not spent money in.
Right, right.
So it is currently budgeted money and no addition to our budget. It allows us to have our play. We have some different guidelines we have to follow to purchase things and in the way that it goes. And then when we sell tickets to the show for this year, that will pay for next year's out of their ECAF account as we have done for many years.
Perfect answer. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
A motion to accept the consent agenda if there's nothing further?
So moved.
Second, Judy? All in favor?
Aye.
Wow, that brings us right to you, Dr. Moro. Right presentation.
So, you know, so we have a new transition in school-to-work coordinator, which was an increase of 0.4 position in our district. And she's with us tonight to present and share and talk about some of the things. She worked predominantly with Dr. Simonetti and Mr. Rush at the high schools. So I'm going to ask Dr. Simonetti to introduce her now and just give, you know, a brief description, and then Nikki will come down and present for us.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Moro. Good evening. Thank you, Board of Education, for allowing us to present this evening. As you know, we've been advocating for a while for Nikki Helf to be a full-time employee here as a career and transition coordinator in Southold Schools. She initially started the position just working with students with IEPs on transition planning for life after high school. And so thankfully, with your support, Nikki's position has become full-time and is really evolving this year. She's doing so many exciting things, and I don't want to steal her thunder, but to name a few, she's expanding well beyond working with students with disabilities, creates internship and work experience opportunities for our students. She started working with our students at the elementary school, talking about transitioning, self-determination, career goals, things like that, working with our students in all different areas, job shadowing, school business advisory liaison, a ton of other things. Again, I don't want to steal Nikki's thunder. She's got a wonderful presentation for you, and she will show you all the wonderful things that she's been doing this year. And we only hope to expand and evolve even more with this position. So thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Helf?
So thank you again for having me tonight. And thank you, Dr. Moro, for inviting me to share with the board what's happened with transition since the position has become in-house here in Southold. All right. So I'm going to start off by just briefly reviewing transition and what it is, because there may be some people in the audience who are not familiar with transition in general. So transition itself is a federal and a state regulation. It's documented formally on the student's individualized education program and is focused on improving the academic and functional achievement of the student to support their movement from secondary school to post-secondary setting. The coordinated set of activities means that the Committee of Special Education has recommended a combination of activities based on the individual student's needs, taking into account their strengths, their preferences, their interests, and that also includes their instruction, related services such as speech, OT, PT, reading, counseling, any community experiences that they have, the development of employment and other post-school and adult living objectives, and if deemed appropriate, any acquisition of daily living skills, and if needed, a functional behavioral assessment. So our functional vocational evaluation, which basically tests them to see what types of jobs that they are able to go into. On the New York State level, the measurable post-secondary goals and recommendations for transition services and activities must be included in each student's IEP beginning not later than the first IEP when the student turns 15, younger if deemed necessary. So what that basically means is that for a transition, when students turn 14, we're setting the goals for the upcoming school year. So that's when we start talking about the transition goals. Essentially, it's to ensure that students have the skills, the self-knowledge, information, connections, and access to any and all support services for their post-secondary plan. All right. So transition in Southold, as Dr. Moro and Dr. Simonetti had said, this was historically, it was historically an outsourced program or service to an agency. In 2019, I was hired part-time and shared with Greenport. Last year, I was part-time with Southold. And then this year, my position became full-time. It was the expansion just from the students 14 and plus with IEPs to serving all students district-wide in a career exploration and transition role. So I'm just going to recap what's happened the last two years, and then I'll share with you what's happened that's new this year. So for ages 14+, the list on the side I'm going to run through, but these are typically all different experiences and kind of routine things that happen in transition. So formerly known as a Level 1 assessment, which they've changed because it was generally the same form with the same questions that was given to the same amount of students, or same students, was not really geared towards that individualized service. So transition assessments now is really an endless myriad of inventory, surveys, questionnaires that guide the direction of the student's transition plan. I've created binders with age-appropriate assessments, and they're earmarked for each grade level or the cognitive ability of the students. And they're provided to each student in that grade if it's a certain goal for that specific grade, such as understanding what their learning style is or activities and lessons on problem-solving skills. The results on these assessments drive the small group or the one-to-one meetings that I have with the students. It's their foundation of their slides for their student-directed IEPs, which I'm going to give you an example of in a little bit. Self-determination is a multi-component broad term that includes choice-making, problem-solving, decision-making, goal-setting and attainment, self-awareness, self-regulation, self-efficacy, and most importantly, self-advocacy. The key is to work readiness, understanding soft skills versus hard skills, for example, time management and communication skills versus using power tools or how to set a table at a restaurant, as well as gaining part-time and seasonal employment or volunteer opportunities in the local community, build connections, work experience and skills, securing and maintaining local community-based work experiences for students who are alternatively assessed. Where gaining valuable employment skills and community connections is really key to them when they do exit high school and they're looking for employment. Career exploration, researching and mapping careers of interest and learning the path to obtaining that career, skills and education needed and the job outlook of that certain career. I had built a career website when the world went dark with COVID because I kind of felt like I needed to be purposeful and really try and put something useful together. So I'm just going to show you guys real quick. So basically what I did was I had put together a kind of general outreach to the community, family, friends, friends of family, and I had asked for them to provide me with short videos of their career path and how they got to where they are today. And what that led me to was highlighting mostly local alumni, although there definitely are a few on there who are not, speaking about their career. And the way that I organized it was by career cluster. So when students take an interest inventory with me and it provides them what their, what types of careers and different career clusters they'll like, they have an opportunity to come to this site, click on the career cluster, and watch videos of some people that they may know from the community or family friends or alumni from Southold, and they'll be able to see kind of where they got to where they are. Oh, boy. Okay. There it is. Exit? Yeah, I'm on it. Okay. Sorry. It's because it's a Mac. I'm going to blame it on that. Oh, boy. All right. There we go. Okay. Okay. So the physical job board, I created a job board upstairs that has flashy lights, although I realized today that they don't flash anymore and I have to get new ones. It's updated pretty much weekly with local jobs. I provide assistance with the application process for students, interview, practice, and resumes. The virtual job board was something that took place last year because we weren't having the normal job fair come into the different school districts. So we kind of all worked together, and I really worked hands-in-hand with Lynn Nyliss, who was the Southold Town Youth Bureau Director, to bring all of those job opportunities virtually. And the town actually hosted the virtual job fair on their website for most of the summer. Okay. Post-secondary planning basically just starts with students knowing what their options are for different pathways after high school, college, two-year or four-year program, a trade or a vocational school, branches of the military and their different options, going to work, or a productive gap year. Whenever we talk about gap year, we always use the word productive. Seventh and eighth grade, I start to push into Mrs. Rizzo's class. She's been having me for the last three years. I help the students with interest identifications, personal profiles, which is basically their introduction resume as they start to look for jobs, identifying and learning about careers that align with their interests, classes available that are in high school that allow them to explore that interest. And Mrs. Elwood has been having me come in for the last three years now with the seniors working on final resumes. We do a roadmap activity towards the end of the school year, informational interviews, job shadows, and then helping students with volunteer opportunities. The referrals to outside supportive agencies would be agencies such as OPWDD, which is the Office for People with Developmental Disabilities, which is a lifelong support service if the family applies and is determined eligible. Typically, that's for our alternatively-assessed students. Access VR, which can help with tuition assistance, one-on-one driving lessons, pre-employment transition services, connections to college disability services and support services. Typically, a lot of students who have disabilities who are seniors think that their disability and their challenges are not going to follow them to the post-secondary level. So it's important for them to ensure that they connect with college disability services prior to enrolling in school. The CAST culinary program, that started back in January of 2020. They got almost the whole program completed and then were closed down for COVID, but they rallied back last year. Typically, it's been housed at a church in Greenport, but now CAST has a beautiful location right in Southold that the students can walk to. The program runs January through March, provides juniors and seniors that have an interest in culinary arts to learn in person from top local chefs, restaurant owners, hospitality professionals. And when completed, the students who participate are offered the opportunity to take the Suffolk County Food Safety Manager's examination. And then the summer program is our transition program, so I work to organize different work experiences in the community, public transportation, travel training, purchasing items, cooking skills, meal prep, and community integration field trips. This year, being expanded to full-time in addition to everything from the last two years, working 14+, I started pushing in down at the elementary school. There is lots of honesty, lots of comical comments, and thought-provoking conversations. It's actually very cool to start having conversations with fifth graders about, you know, what they wanted to be when they were little, what they want to be now, and why. So one of the things that I've been working on down there, goal-setting, has been a target skill for our district, for students to really start fine-tuning their goals and making sure that they're important to them and that they're attainable. So we've talked about the goal-setting, expansion, how to choose meaningful goals, and then grit, finding that inner self-determination to be able to reach those goals. Interest identification, you know, basically what students like, what they don't like, what their strengths are, what they need help with. Identifying different career clusters, learning about them, careers that align with their interests, and choosing one, towards the end of this year, they'll be choosing one, and then sharing with their classmates what they, the career that they chose and what it entails. And the school business advisory. So the school business advisory, so this year, we had to organize a senior mentor breakfast on our own. Paconic Landing typically organizes that for us and hosts us, but this year, they could not. So we kind of quickly put it together ourselves. We had a very successful event. The American Legion hosted us, and we had about 15 students from each local district that participated, and we had mentors who came and shared about their career paths. Our job fair and our job shadow days. The town internship project was something that started last spring. The town had approached me to come on and kind of get them, help them get the program up and running. So essentially, what that's looking for is juniors and seniors locally being matched with an employer, putting in about 54 hours of training, and the hopes is that they'll be obtaining at least part-time employment with that business at the end of the internship. The job and career fair, we're looking for a date towards the end of April. It should be fine-tuned tomorrow with the school business advisory board. And career fair, we just recently did the Northwell Health Spark Challenge. I had three students who participated in that. It was a virtual conference, so it was kind of hard to pull kids into that, but we sat in the library for a bunch of hours, and we watched different videos or live presentations or interactions with an EMT, with a psychiatrist, with a hospital social worker, and they basically talked about their career paths. And at the end of that, there's a presentation that the students are going to all work on together. They have to pick two of the careers and provide a video and then make a poster about one of them, and then we'll be submitting that back to Northwell Health. And we just recently hosted Transition Night, so this is another site I put together because I feel that there's never enough resources for parents. Is this it? Nope. Okay. So this is linked right under our guidance section of our school website. There is Southold Transition Services and... How do I expand this? I am not a Mac person.
Where are you trying to go?
Just expand this to full?
Oh. It's not a... You know what? There's no little box there. It's visible, no?
Okay.
Everybody can see.
Yeah. So basically, I put together all the resources that most parents would need. Basically, what is transition, which we've summed up, career and self... Thank you. One touch. One touch.
The Mac guy.
Unbelievable.
Wait, stay down here so you can get her out of it now.
Okay. No, because I think I can click right back and I should be good, but thank you. So basically, what I did on here was put a whole bunch of information that families can go and explore on their own and then hopefully reach out to me or someone else within the building for additional resources to help them fill out applications. There's guardianship information on here, transportation information, OPWDD and the access VR that we spoke about, the New York State graduation rates, because those are requirements, those are constantly changing. And these are just sites that will take them directly to the information for New York State. So I didn't put any information on there that could change. It's going to bring them right to the state site. Social Security, income, Medicaid, a lot of this is for families who would need those additional supports. But one of the things that I did put on here is upcoming parent trainings and support. You know, as we try as hard as we possibly can to be able to reach families and get families engaged, some of them are not able to get here on certain days, certain times. Maybe they don't feel comfortable asking for certain information. So these are all trainings on here that are free. They are sponsored, most of them, through LIU, which is a, which is a agency, basically a grant run through LIU that us as staff have been taking trainings with this whole year. I have the virtual Suffolk County Transition Fair on here, which we did last year because, again, we couldn't do a lot of in-person opportunities. So this is something that, you know, an opportunity that families can come to, get some free training if they choose to. Some stuff is actually recorded, so if it's something that doesn't work with their schedule, they can log in at their leisure and still get the opportunity. All right. So without further ado, I'm going to talk a little bit about two of our Southold stars. One of them is here today, and he's going to talk a little bit about his transition from high school to the adult world. So I'm going to give him a few minutes to come up. You want me to do the other one first?
No, I'll go first.
All right. Thanks, Andrew.
You know, Andrew.
Hi, my name is Andrew Clausen. I graduated from Suffolk High School last June. I want to tell you about how Mrs. Helf's services have greatly benefited my life. Mrs. Helf is a very nice and friendly person, plus she's a diehard honor fan, just like me. I liked how she would ask me lots of questions in care of what I was saying. She would also give me questionnaire-like tests, which would show her my strengths and weaknesses and areas to help find a career since I wanted to go to college. Since I am strong in math and love science, she thought pharmacy technician would be a great place to start. Mrs. Helf arranged for after-school internship at Ketchikan Pharmacy for four months. I worked with Vinnie, the pharmacist, who showed me what the job was about, and I loved it. In 11th grade, when COVID hit, it was hard to do normal driver's ed program, so Mrs. Helf recommended the BOSI's Adaptive Driving Program, in which the instructor came to my house and took me out one-on-one and also brought me to the driving test. Mrs. Helf was always reaching out to me with part-time job ideas in Southold, and as a result, I have been working the last six months at Fitness Advantage in Southold, which I love working at. Mrs. Helf helped me in so many ways to help me succeed in my goals. She is truly a special person and has the skill to help out all students. Through Mrs. Helf's guidance and encouragement, she has made me aware of what life is like out there, and with tackling the social and community side of my education, I'm a licensed driver. I am going to Suffolk Community College. I work part-time, 17 hours, at a job I love. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Actually, in my, I actually graduated with my first semester at Suffolk Community College, and I made the dean's less. Now's my first day of Suffolk Community College, the spring semester.
Good for you.
Good for you, Andrew.
Sky's the limit. Sky's the limit.
Thank you. Okay. So, I mean, a star is so much, he's so much more than a star. So the last thing that I just wanted to share with you guys was give you an example of something that new that we started this year. So Dr. Simonetti, myself, and another teacher are working with LIU to go through a training for student-directed IEPs. So basically, what this is, is students understanding their foundations, understanding what their interests are, their likes, their disability. And basically, you know, yes, this is the definition of what my disability is, but how does it actually affect me and what do I need to overcome that so that I can be successful in whatever setting I'm headed off to? Okay. So just to summarize, towards the end of the spring, I'm definitely going to be pushing into K through 4, introduce myself, just kind of talk about what we're going to look to plan for next year. I am looking to push into all grades starting next year. Grades five and six, focusing on the strengths and needs, what their interests are, what they like and don't like, and matching their interests with different careers. Grades seven and eight, identifying what their learning style is, their personal profile, again, that intro resume. Grades nine and 10, identifying, you know, the 21st century work skills. So what are employers really looking for and how do, how do students build those skills so that they have those? Getting their working papers. BOSI's becoming available the following year. What are some programs that they could be interested in? Financial literacy basics and student government, what does that mean? And grades 11 and 12, types of resumes. Oh, Coola can tell you, they, he probably never wants to see a resume again until he's applying for a job, but Mrs. Elwood has them create multiple a job, but Mrs. Elwood has them create multiple resumes. They have an educational resume, they have a sports resume, they have a career resume. They have a bunch of different resumes that they work on, and they're all geared towards different goals. And then our reboots, multiple reboots of, you know, adding new classes that they've taken, or interests. And civic readiness, what does that mean when we are leaving high school, registering to vote, that type of stuff. So thank you so much for your present... for your invitation tonight, to present to you. It was a pleasure. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes. So that last slide that you just showed us?
Yes.
You're doing that kind of pushing and that kind of support for all students?
Yes.
Not just students with IEPs or whatever. Okay.
Thank you.
Very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
This was super... Excuse me, super informative.
Thank you.
For me, anyway. Just amazing. Thank you, Mr. Clausen. Thank you, Nikki. Very impressive.
Anything else to add in your presentation, Dr. Morrow?
Nope. I just want to thank Nikki. You know, it's a work in progress in being able to extend some of these things. And we had this conversation last year. You know, the mandated transition services in New York State, which I understand because my son was provided them as a student, you know, with a disability. And I sat there and I thought, you know, this is something that really would benefit all of our students. The fact that we have to do it, you know, for certain students shouldn't prohibit us from wanting to do it for all, you know. And that's when we presented to the board, and they approved the ability for us to, you know, to increase the time that Nikki gets to spend with us. And, you know, over the next couple of years, ideally, I'd love to have it all implemented right away, but it doesn't work that way. But over the next couple of years, we'll be able to implement, you know, these supports for all of our Southhold students, and hopefully give them better ability to make choices for themselves and follow a good pathway to a future life outside of Southhold schools.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Now, 9:00 is Old Business, and then it comes to Superintendent's report.
Yeah, you have it. That's the right agenda.
Old Business, and then... Well, usually he goes with the presentation. That's why. Superintendent's report is coming at 9:00.
Gotcha.
So you want to just put all that together?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so Old Business and Superintendent's report, we'll put that all together. So, you know, we had secured prior to my ever coming to the District of Dastney grant, and, you know, the board and I have had conversations about it. We've looked into it. Some good news that we got today. Mr. Scheid spoke to the grant people, and they did tell us that the amount of money we wanted to put into the grant would be allowable to go towards the tennis courts. I also know that I did share some other information. At this point, you know, I wanted to be able to answer any questions the board might have about it, but I'd be at the point now where I'd be calling the architect and talking to him about some of the things that you guys asked me to speak to him about, you know, when it came to...
Based on our last conversation.
Based on our last conversation. I haven't... Until I found out whether that grant money was available to us, it didn't make sense to have that conversation with him, you know. But now that we... When we just found out today, you know, Chuck just told me today that in speaking with them, as long as it's couched the way that we explained we want to use it, it was permissible within the grant. You know, so now I'll call him in and have a conversation with him and get real, you know...
Final numbers.
Concrete numbers.
Okay.
I did get numbers that I shared with you guys about, you know, when it was a B-bond project, it was put up as 300. And then, you know, the LanTech estimate from five years ago was about 210.
And now?
Now it's almost double that. But, you know, go buy a piece of plywood, and you'll figure out why, you know, construction costs are double.
You even get the supplies now?
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, with your blessing, I'll go forward, and I'll call him in and, you know, get concrete numbers on the two different options.
When you get the numbers, can you get a timeframe? Because this could be supply chain issues.
Yeah.
Right, guys? He can go ahead, but we should get a timeframe, because, as I said, the supply chain issues could really affect this. Like Judy just said, maybe the longer we wait, the less it will cost at this point, too, with the cost of things.
We're still waiting for the skids to heal, whether we bought eight months ago. I mean, that... Anybody who wanted to buy toilet paper 12 months ago understands the way it works, you know. There is stuff that's... Because of the pandemic, that's very difficult to get. So I'll get that also for him. You know, we have a lot of stuff going on right now in the district. Sports, we're kind of at a little bit of a lull between sports with middle school and high school right now, but we did get to have our white-out game here, which I was able to attend part of, and it was nice to see that for the first time. We had our elementary concerts, which were excellent, also the first time that they've happened since I've been here, and it was great to see our kids up there and enjoying themselves. You know, so we do have a lot going on in the district. You know, we're trying to keep as many of our activities as we have in the past in as normal a sense as we can with all the new guidelines, and it's really enjoyable to see the kids coming back to some of these things. You know, they're already rehearsing for the new show, and trying out for all the different parts. And, you know, so we do have a lot of those things going on, and it's really nice to see them happening.
Can I conclude your report?
That's it. Yep.
Thank you. That brings us to personnel. We have a couple of things here. Employees leaving the district on a full-time permanent basis. Donna Musquars retirement effective July 15, 2023. Victoria Abrams retirement effective June 30, 2023. Kristin Derrickens revised leave effective January 6, 2022. Stephanie Berberich revised leave effective January 18, 2022. Lindsay Longo childcare leave effective May 27, 2022 through June 24, 2022. And then we have employees entering the district. Terry Sanders is the revised science leave replacement for Ms. Berberich, effective January 18 through June 24, 2022. And Stephanie Scarnetti, the special ed leave replacement for Viscozo, effective March 7, 2022 through June 24, 2022. And then we have some substitute teachers entering the district. Any questions or comments on the personnel recommendations? Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Who was the second? Sorry. John? John? All in favor?
Aye.
Finance committee report?
No report.
Building committee report?
We had a meeting. We completed our five-year building survey with our architect. He was happy. He said he... They always find problems, but he said the problems he found in our district were small problems compared to the problems that he found in other districts. You know, leaks, cracked sidewalks, minor things that are easily repairable, not expensive to repair. So that was good to hear. He really praised our staff. The two biggest issues that really came up is our boilers are old, and we probably have five to seven years max on those boilers. And...
In this building or in both buildings?
This building only.
This building's old, yeah.
And he estimates that those will be in the range of, you know, $700,000 or $800,000 when we have to replace those. So we have to come up...
Have you used the capital funds for that down the road?
Yeah. I guess what we're going to have to do is sit down with Chuck and figure out how we can sort of start squirreling that money away so that we don't have to bond it or do anything else when they do go. But they're over, I guess, 20 years old, and our staff has been able to keep them going. But that will not be for more than... Certainly no more than 10 years. So that's a big expense. We're going to have to...
He said shortly, "We'll have a hard time getting parts to repair them, because they just don't make them anymore."
And then I guess there are some air handlers that we're going to replace piecemeal, and we're doing one now, and there are some others. Those are less expensive, and that's probably something, you know, we'll be able to do gradually over time. We're lucky that our reserves are well-funded. We're very lucky that our community has supported our budget year in and year out. So even these big expenses, we're not going to have to bond. And again, a lot of the little stuff he picked out, he was happy, because then he showed us some of the things he's found in other districts, where, you know, walls are falling down, entire sides of buildings are crumbling, you know, really, really big problems because of neglect. So we're lucky that we, you know, we don't have that situation here.
Maybe if you guys want to consider, because if you're going to think about using the capital, which requires voter approval, and I know how long it takes, the months and the years, that you might want to put something together for...
Yeah, we're going to have to...
A year from May, almost.
We're going to have to talk to Chuck about the mechanics of where the money needs to come from.
It takes so long now.
Where the money needs to come from, and how to do it, you know, responsibly and legally. But the bottom line is, we're not going to have to go to the taxpayers and ask them for millions of dollars in bonds, because we'll be able to cover this. Exactly, I'm not an expert on which funds it's got to come out and how it gets transferred. That I don't know. That I'm going to leave up to the business people. But the general report was good. We... Because we have some parts of these buildings are very old. And he was very complimentary of our staff for keeping things going and staying on top of things. And, you know, then there were other areas, like there were some sidewalks that aren't ADA compliant, because they don't, like, line up evenly with the door. So he said, you know, "We're grandfathered in because they're so old." But he says, you know, "Eventually, when you replace that, it's got..." You know, he... The guy knows what he's doing. So I think, you know, we switched from a big architectural firm to a smaller firm, and I think that was... That's going to be good for us right now.
What he routinely said throughout the whole thing is, "What we need is general maintenance and not major overhaul like many districts do."
Right.
You know?
So that's the... That was our building committee meeting.
Thank you. Policy committee, Scott?
Nothing.
New business?
I just have a question. On our... At our February meeting, are we going to talk about the calendar for next year and adopt it? Yes. Okay.
Yep.
Because I know it's a tricky one.
It was adopted by... The BOSI's calendar was adopted last week, and they sent it... They sent their adopted calendar to us. We all work off the BOSI's calendar.
With some modifications?
With some modifications, because we don't have... We don't have the same exact number of days, and we don't have the same... You know, so we're not exactly the same as BOSI's. But BOSI's adopted theirs about a week, week and a half ago, which means we've now put together our final draft, which will be sent to you guys this week.
Right.
And then hopefully, we'll be able to adopt at the February board meeting.
I see it's tricky Labor Day being late.
Excuse me?
It's a little tricky with Labor Day being late again.
It's a tough calendar year. You know, we have an extra day. We have Juneteenth, which is now a required holiday, so that takes away one day. And we have a late student start, you know. So we'll get it. We'll figure it out.
Always do. Thank you. Okay, this brings us to our second hearing of visitors. At this time, we'll listen to any comments and questions you have about agenda items or school matters in general. I ask, when you come up to the microphone, please state your name and where you live, like Southold, Pecan, wherever. Anybody care to address the board at this time?
Come on up.
Come on up.
I have a handout for you guys. Oh, cool. Thanks. Hi, my name is Laura Clary. I live down the road on South Harbor Road. And I am the chair of the North Fork Dark Sky Coalition. My father always taught us that you should shake somebody's hand and look them in the eye. So in that vein, I thought it would be important to come tonight to present our letter to you regarding the exterior lighting installed on all of Southhold's schools' buildings, as well as throughout the school grounds. In the last few years, a majority of the grandfathered exterior lighting fixtures have been switched out for new unshielded fixtures, and additional unshielded fixtures have been installed throughout the campus. And all of these violate Southhold Town Code, Chapter 172, which is the exterior lighting code. In addition to violating the town code, these bright lights create a hardship to those studying the night sky with various telescopes at Custer Institute, which is about a half mile away from here. Among other stipulations, the Southhold Town Code, Chapter 172, requires that all exterior light fixtures installed after July 2010 are fully shielded, which means zero uplight, and that they are outfitted with 3,000 Kelvin bulbs, which is commonly known as a soft white glow bulb. Just so you know, the town of Southhold's streetlights, when they updated them in 2019, they actually switched to 2,700 Kelvin, which is a more amber light. So it's actually better for your eyes when you're driving at night, as well as it's better for wildlife. Also, according to town code, adjacent properties and right-of-ways must be protected from glare and excess of lighting. So then, the light trespass across onto a public right-of-way and adjacent property is no more than .05-foot candles. And then, thirdly, all nonessential exterior lighting must be turned off within a half hour after the close of business or when it's not in use. The town code also encourages that there's the use of motion sensors or controlled timers for safety purposes. The North Fork Dark Sky Coalition urges more stringent guidelines, actually, for exterior lighting plans, including the use of amber light sources, which is a Kelvin of about 2,200. It's not about... It is a Kelvin of 2,200. And that at flagpoles, upward-facing floodlights are removed and replaced with a flagpole-down light. So it's amber light that's on the top of the flagpole where that ornament typically is, or that the daily tradition of taking... Putting up the flag and down the flag each day is adopted. So given the advancements in lighting technology and your proximity to Custer Institute, as well as the legislative trends towards the darker sky, all of this is in the letter in more detail. We encourage you to meet and exceed the town's current exterior lighting code. I'm sure that officials at Southhold Town Government would be willing to help you with this, and volunteers at Custer Institute are also willing to offer assistance and practical advice. So, yeah, I just... I think it's important to see people in person, especially with everything that's gone on for the last two years. So I appreciate that you have this meeting.
Thank you. Certainly, we'll look into this stuff. It's... I'm not well-versed, so I won't make any comments on it, but thank you.
Yeah. You know, even just driving down Oaklawn Avenue, the two PSCNG lights that were put up on those electrical poles, the light trespass onto the road, like I said, is supposed to be .05-max foot candles. It's actually 10.5-foot candles. So when you're driving along Oaklawn at night, it really is such a glare that it makes it difficult to drive in that area because you become blinded. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Would anyone else care to address the board at this time? Kate, are you back there? Nothing? Okay. Nobody? Okay, that brings us to our board member commentary. As always, we start with our student representative. Mr. Okula, how's it going down there?
Pretty good.
Good.
Tell us what you've got going on. So, just on the school, right now, we have, obviously, Dr. Morrow talked about it, but we have the winter sports going on, and that's been great to see all our teams. Our boys' basketball team has been having some success as of late. And just with those basketball games, having all the students pack the gym again. Obviously, last year, we were unable to have that, but seeing the crowd able to come to these indoor sporting events, just having that energy there has been really great and a fun time, obviously, for the students who are on the team, feeling that energy, but also gives students who are not on the team something to do, go to those games, support their friends and classmates. And then also, the girls' basketball team, which is combined with Greenport, has been having an outstanding season. I think they're first in their league right now. And yeah, just so all our winter sports team, the cheer team, they've placed third in several competitions. So just all winter sports, that's been really great to see, and having that, being able to go to the games again, those basketball games, having that energy there. As for student council, we have, I believe it's on February 17, we have a SoHo Olympics planned, which is basically just, we're going to have, grades nine through 12, they're able to sign up, make a team of six, and it'll be an event...
I'd just like to recognize, Greenport Schools lost a beautiful soul last Friday. Just a fantastic teacher, fantastic mother, fantastic person, Celia Dasta. Seeing the whole, well, their whole school, a good portion of this school, and pretty much the entire North Fork show, show up to honor her, it was, it was just a, but this is a nice place to live.
Thank you for bringing that up. Dr. Cream?
Well, school is open. Our kids are still coming to school. Unfortunately, we're still dealing with viruses. I, I want to thank the community because I think a lot of people are aware of the fight about the masks that's ongoing, and, and there's been some, some unpleasant behavior at other school districts on Long Island, understandably so. You know, this is going on a long time. I hate wearing a mask. We're all frustrated. A lot of us are, you know, people are confused about changing guidelines, and I have to say, people in our community have been extraordinarily respectful, and, and that's nice, and that's nice. And we're all going to get through this together. Our, our staff has done a wonderful job, our families, our kids have been great. We haven't had to put up the shields. I remember we asked the kids at the end of last year what they hated, and they, you know, those, and I can imagine sitting in a classroom having to look through plastic, you know? So, luckily, that hasn't had to happen, and we have been relatively safe in this district. We've been, we've really been spared, you know? Some districts have really had some, you know, tragic things happen to their, to their folks, and that hasn't happened. I'm just very grateful to the community for the respect that they've shown each other, even though there's a lot of people who have different opinions about what we should be doing. It's going to be very interesting to see what happens if and when the mask mandate is no longer required. Hopefully, as the weather warms, it won't be necessary, but I, I just want to thank the community. That's, and I, I've been part of the community since 1994. I, I feel so blessed to live here and to be part of this community, and I'm very grateful. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Mrs. Fouchet?
I just really was very impressed by what we're doing with the transition services, and I want, thank you, Dr. Morrow and everybody, for bringing that to us. We don't always get to see really in-depth all the, the good new things that you guys are doing in the school, so it's really nice to get it and to get the full picture. So, thank you very much for that, and thank you for bringing up your issue to the board in the way you did. It brings us, it's a, it's a wear, and it's a nice way to do it. So, thank you very much. I have nothing else to say, other than everybody have a good couple of weeks.
Thank you. Great presentation, Nikki. Thank you. Thank you for bringing, well, Nikki, to us, but the presentation, in the beginning, you said you were informing the parents and the community. It was an education for me as a board member. Honest to God, I had no idea what the program was or how much was entailed in it. So, I thank you. I thank you for being there for all of our students. Mr. Clausen, thank you for coming back to your alumni school and speaking. You're a perfect example of what we do right in Southhold. All of the Clausens are perfect examples of, of, of Southhold School District. Thank you, Stacy and Jeff, for sharing them with us. Kudos to, again, our students. We all say what a special place it is that we're chosen to live. Thank you for bringing the light issue to our attention. I know Dr. Morrow will look into it, as he said he would. It's been a very sad January on the North Fork, really sad January on the North Fork. Thank you, Mr. Latham, for bringing up about Ms. Augusta. I'll point out that Judy lost her dad, and I bring it up because he was also a former school board member here at Southhold School District. So, our sympathies to you and your family, and thanks for his service and your service and your family's service over the years. Thank you for coming. Our next meeting is on February 16th. Mr. Okula, thanks for always keeping us up to date in such a positive manner. You represent your student body well.
Thank you so much.
And you guys, you guys are the reasons all of us are here. Thank you, Dr. Semenetti and Mr. Rush, for, as always, bringing these presentations to us. I, for one, have gotten so much out of the last few months in seeing what happens behind the scenes in our schools, you know? It's very, very informative and helpful to me as a school board member to see this stuff. I love it. I love seeing what our students are involved in. So, we see you on February, that's before break, right? That's the week before break.
Week before.
In the meantime, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.